It is seven one PM on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. My name is Kevin Ellis. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board this year, and we're going to start this meeting. As I do, I'll read some brief introductory notes. They are that this meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts two thousand twenty-three, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You hereby advise that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify me at the start of the meeting in accordance with MGL Chapter thirty A, Section twenty F, so that I, as the Chair, may inform all other participants of said recording. All right, not seeing anyone. With that, we will turn it over to a quick introduction to my colleagues in the board, which serve as kind of an attendance. I see Tracy Schreiber here.
Yeah.
Gordon Carr?
Yeah.
Rita De Silva?
Yeah.
Don't see our colleague Gary Condar Dick yet. As I said earlier, my name is Kevin Ellis. We're joined by staff tonight. I see Emily Wentworth, who's the Director of Community Planning. I think I saw Michael Soler on here, who is our staff aide. Hi, thanks, Mike. And Susan Murphy is our Town Real Estate Council. With that, we can get going. We have two substantive hearings, you know, permitting hearings, and then we have some zoning articles to get through. So the first permitting hearing is thirty-two Kimball Beach Road. This is a site plan review. North America Development filed an application for site plan review under Section One I of the zoning bylaw to reconstruct a single-family dwelling with associated grading landscaping, hardscaping, landscaping, hardscaping, and thirty-two Kimball Beach Road in Residence District A. The applicant requested to continue the application, so I will make a motion that we continue the application of North America Development for site plan review under Section One I of the zoning bylaw to reconstruct a single-family dwelling with the associated grading landscaping and hardscaping and thirty-two Kimball Beach Road in Residence District A to April eight, two thousand twenty-four, at seven PM, and extend the decision deadline to the April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Planning Board. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
I'll take Tracy in a second. Just for the record, Gary Condar Dick, our colleague, has joined the call. We'll do a quick roll call vote on that. Gordon Carr?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
Rita?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
And I'm in, as well. And we have a similar situation here with thirty-four Kimball Beach Road. This is also a site plan review. North America Development filed an application for site plan review under Section One I of the zoning bylaw to reconstruct a single-family dwelling with associated grading landscaping and hardscaping at thirty-four Kimball Beach Road in Residence District A. Here as well, the applicants asked to continue the application, so I'll make the following motion, that we continue the application of North America Development for site plan review under Section One I of the zoning bylaw to reconstruct a single-family dwelling with associated grading landscaping and hardscaping at thirty-four Kimball Beach Road in Residence District A to the April eighth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Planning Board at seven PM, and extend the decision deadline to April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Tracy. Can I roll call vote? Gordon Carr?
Hi.
Gary Condar Dick?
Hi.
Rita De Silva?
Hi.
Tracy Schreiber?
Hi.
And I'm in as well. All right, now we get into the zoning articles. The first article on the agenda is Article MMM, which is the South Shore Country Club Zoning District. We're actually, I'm going to make a motion that we extend discussion on this or just hold discussion on this to the next meeting of the Planning Board. Our real estate council, Susan Murphy, is still working out some final details here, and I think I'd like us to have the fuller picture before we get into talking about this. So, Mike, is the marteen the next meeting? Is that right?
Yep.
All right, so I make a motion that we continue discussion or continue discussion of Article MMM, South Shore Country Club Zoning District, to the April eighteen meeting of the Planning Board at seven PM.
Second.
Thank you, Rita. Roll call vote, Gary Condar Dick?
Hi.
Gordon Carr?
Hi.
Tracy Schreiber?
Hi.
Rita De Silva?
Hi.
And I'm in, as well. All right, I think this will be our first stop in the discussion of the night. The next zoning article is the MBTA Communities Multifamily Housing. This is Articles GGG and LLL. We're going to open both Article GGG and Article LLL. I'm going to turn it over to Emily Wentworth on staff to introduce these and kind of walk us, you know, members of the public, to walk us back through a brief introduction to the Communities Act, how we got here, and then I think I'll turn it over to Tracy Schreiber and who I think will speak for kind of the subcommittee of Gary Condar Dick, that we empower to take a look at one of the potential overlay districts and some of the zoning changes we might be able to make to that as we look at what we'd like to do as a board moving forward. So I think I'll let Emily go first. I think I'll leave us in a spot where we kind of get a sense of what our options are for tonight and what we're going to be discussing tonight. We talk about it as a board, and then obviously I'll open it up to public comment, and we can go from there. So Emily, I can see your screen here.
Thanks, Kevin. I forgot to unmute myself. Appreciate the introduction and thank you for opening these together. And, whoop. Well, sorry, white screen everybody's seeing.
Yes.
I assume, okay, bear with me. I'm gonna have to close a PDF and open from PowerPoint.
While Emily's doing that, I can note for the record since our last meeting, and apologize, I'm not sure the exact date where we had our last discussion. I think it was towards the end of January. Where is that, right, Mike? Sorry.
The last one was February twelfth.
February twelfth, thank you. We received some public comment, all of which is available on the website. You can work under the assumption, members of the public, that the board has read that. We've all received the letters and the comments and have looked through them. So with that, thank you, Emily.
Yep. Thanks for your patience. Nope, are you still seeing my screen?
Yep. It says MBTA Communities Multifamily with some redlining.
Okay, bear with me. At the wrong screen. Okay, here we are. So Kevin, you outlined the agenda broadly. Here it is. Just again, this will give you a little bit of a snapshot as to what items we intend to present. The first few relate to both Articles GGG, the original MBTA Communities By Right Multifamily Zoning article, and then the up and as well as Article LLL. I'll just note, this is the first hearing on that item. We'll be going through LLL and the specifics of that one first, and then returning to GGG when the working group can make its recommendations to the board. And then, as always, we'll follow with board discussion, public comment, and we'll talk about the schedule going forward. And sorry, now hopefully that's a little bit bigger. So just to summarize what the law requires, and I apologize that this is a little bit redundant with respect to Article GGG hearings, because you've heard it before, but for anybody newly joining us for Article LLL, we'll just recap that this is related to a two thousand twenty-one state law. Section three A of the zoning act, Mass General Law, has Chapter forty A, now requires that an MBTA community create at least one zoning district of a reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted by right as opposed to by special permit or comprehensive permit or other mechanism, and it meets other criteria in the statute. Those criteria include that the district provide an overall gross density of fifteen units per acre, that it be located not more than a half mile from some form of transit. In our case, that would be either commuter rail station or a ferry terminal. The district cannot impose any age restrictions, so it's not senior housing only, and it must be suitable for families with children. In part, that means that you can't impose limitations on the number of bedrooms that would be contained in units. The statute also enabled what was then the Department of Housing and Community Development is now the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities for the state to create guidelines. Those guidelines, we saw the first final forum in August of two thousand twenty-two, provide some interpretation of the statute and include additional state requirements for MBTA communities. And this little chart at the bottom of the screen that you're seeing, it spells out what some of those requirements are. So interpreting what a reasonably sized district would be, the guidelines introduce two new concepts. One is a minimum land area requirement for most communities, including Hingham. That's fifty acres, which is based on about the, well, it's based on the size that equates to ten percent of a half-mile radius around a transit area. Of those fifty acres, at least one portion of the district must consist of twenty-five contiguous acres, and no other portion of the district or sub-district can be less than five acres in size. The other reasonable size concept relates to a minimum unit capacity that varies depending on the type of MBTA community a municipality happens to be. In the case of Hingham, which is, qualifies as a commuter rail community, it is equivalent to fifteen percent of the number of housing units that were reported in town on the two thousand twenty census. So for Hingham, our number that we have to hit is one thousand four hundred and ninety units. This is all about creating zoning capacity, not actually production. So it's about creating zoning that would allow for up to one thousand four hundred and ninety units in a district of at least fifty acres. That doesn't necessarily mean that those units will be built, you know, in the near term or potentially ever. The other items I'd like to point out in this little chart is that only a portion of our district needs to be located within the half-mile radius of a transit station. That, that portion is seventy-five percent. Another twenty-five percent could be located anywhere in town. The reason for that is because of the amount of developable station area that we have available. What you don't see on your slide is, in terms of developable area, there are a number of items that are types of land that the state does not allow us to include in the developable station area. So those types of excluded land include publicly owned property, wetlands, and other constrained areas. The impact of noncompliance were the town not to adopt by right multifamily zoning. Based on the statute, there are four programs that the town of Hingham would no longer be eligible to access. These are significant funding programs that the town has accessed in the past, includes the Housing Choice Program, Mass Works, Housing Works, and then a Local Capital Projects Fund. That program actually is funneled towards local housing authorities. So while it wouldn't directly impact the town of Hingham proper, it would certainly have the potential to impact our local housing authority. There are also thirteen other state programs that have been identified as at risk or that noncompliant communities would not be eligible for. You can see the list there. A number of these we have also accessed in the past. And then finally, there's kind of a catch-all note that determinations of compliance would influence all funding decisions made by the Executive Office of Economic Development, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, we'll refer to that as HLC going forward, the MBTA and other state agencies when they're making discretionary funding decisions. Finally, in March, the Attorney General released an advisory that said MBTA communities cannot avoid their obligations under the law by foregoing this funding. And in addition, the advisory cautions that communities that fail to comply with the law may be subject to civil enforcement action, and communities that fail to comply with the law's requirements also risk liability under federal and state fair housing laws. So there are two pieces of this to give you an idea of what the financial impact may be. The town in the past year accessed approximately a million dollars in state funding. Our projections of applications, at least, in the coming year are around ten million dollars. So it's not insignificant. Locally, so those are, you know, largely the state requirements as they relate to Hingham, but the way we've been managing this process to date is mostly through public meetings between two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. There were three joint Select Board, Planning Board, public meetings. And there were two additional Planning Board individual public meetings. In the fall of two thousand twenty-three, the Planning Board then held three public meetings to review the draft zoning, the specific nuts and bolts of what this new section of the zoning bylaw may look like. And then since January, the board has held, well, this is the fifth substantive public hearing on the initial article, GGG. This is, as I noted earlier, the first public hearing on the alternate Article LLL. And then you can see some bullets about other groups that we've had discussions with. I want to point out that we have been able to access some state resources in order to work towards compliance. The first was from the Massachusetts Housing Partnership. We received a three A based on the section of the statute, Technical Assistance Grant, where we were able to engage Bowler Engineering to complete a compliance model. So there's a rather robust Excel file that needs to be prepared to demonstrate that we can meet the land area and the minimum unit capacity requirements of the guidelines. So that's been finalized. We also received a Housing Choice Grant to engage RKG to complete an economic feasibility analysis so that we could potentially increase the level of inclusionary zoning or the number of affordable units that could be produced at some point in the future through the by right multifamily zoning. Oops. And my slide is not advanced. Oh, there we go. So with respect to that last bullet, the statute doesn't refer to affordability. And in fact, the initial guidelines, final guidelines, did not require that communities impose affordability requirements. The guidelines were amended to allow communities to opt to require a level of affordability equal to ten percent of the units. And, and you may also be able to impose a greater level of affordability, up to twenty percent, if you conduct an economic feasibility analysis. And there is a whole separate guidance document on how to prepare one of those. It has to be prepared by a qualified professional. It can't be done in-house. And that's in part why we were, we accessed the state grant to engage RKG. The work that they did, and this is posted to the Planning Board's webpage, looked at the construction costs, the operating costs, and then anticipated revenues from this type of housing. The study assumed that we would impose a fifteen percent requirement for affordability for households that are earning eighty percent of area median income. The report demonstrates that that type of development would be economic, and it projects a return on cost of between six and seven percent, which is consistent with, you know, the state standards for a project that would be economic. Just so folks know, and this is really just background, but what a household earning eighty percent of area median income is equivalent to depends on the household size. So you can see the range for a single person. It's approximately eighty-three thousand dollars a year. For a four-person household, it's just under a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. So it's really, it's not low-income housing. It's moderate-income housing. Housing costs for, and this is, these numbers right here, just assume a three-bedroom. The ownership unit would be somewhere around three hundred and fifteen, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then a rental unit presently for a three-bedroom is being offered for more than three thousand dollars a month. We have a number of developments in Hingham that include inclusionary units or affordable units. You can see the level. Many of these that have the twenty-five percent penciled in, so Adams Court, the Avalon Two and the Avalon One Multifamily, Derby Brook, Damon Farm, and Whiting Lane were permitted as comprehensive permits. So twenty-five percent is what they would need to meet. Back River, you know, shows up a little bit differently here. That was approved under the zoning bylaw through a special permit, and it provides eleven percent of the units in that development are also affordable, so five of the forty-five. Um, so now to get into where the district, the proposed district, would be located. This slide applies to both Articles GGG, the original, and Article LLL. So you can see these parcels outlined in red are proposed to be a part of the district. They largely were chosen to reflect where we've already built out multifamily housing. So here you can see Hewitt's Landing. This is the Avalon One Development. This is the Avalon Two Development. And this is the Cove Development on Beale Street, which qualifies because it's frontage touch, a station area. Its frontage touches upon that half-mile radius from the Hingham Ferry Terminal. So these would be divided into different sub-districts with different densities, but at least it gives you a visual of the properties that are included in both of the pending MBTA articles. Now, this is what we are newly presenting this evening. So this is a proposed sub-district that's a part of Article LLL. So you can see these two properties highlighted here in yellow. They are located at one Sergeant William B. Terry Way, or Drive, excuse me, and two twenty-five Beale Street. To just give you some context, this Sergeant William B. Terry Drive property is developed presently with a nursing home. It consists of forty-eight units. This two twenty-five Beale Street property is operated by Hitchcock Shoe. It is developed with an approximately thirty-six thousand square foot wholesale slash office building. And you can see it falls primarily within the half-mile radius of the Hingham Ferry. So like the Cove, it would, it would be eligible to be included as station area. And here are just some of the specifics on this proposed portion of the overall district. It consists of seven point five acres. The density that it has been penciled in, in the pending zoning article, is fifteen units per acre that would yield in the compliance model, a hundred and twelve units overall. And it would make the district broadly consist of fifty-three point five acres with an overall capacity of one thousand five hundred and two units. So it's, it's meeting the requirements of the statute and the guidelines where the district would be greater than fifty acres and the unit capacity would be greater than one thousand four hundred and ninety. At this table in the bottom, this is what is included in the article, but highlighted in red are some of the changes that have been proposed most recently. The first, and this is related to the density, as the board discussed when the, when we reviewed the alternate locations that were considered, all of those were assumed to be zoned for fifteen units per acre, which is what the goal is for the overall district. So the two properties on Sergeant William Terry and Beale Street were put into Subdistrict Four that already existed at fifteen units per acre. The other component of Subdistrict Four is the Avalon Townhomes. So you can see what dimensional standards would apply to that. These changes right here in Subdistrict Three, which now would consist under Article LLL of the Cove alone. These were modified in part because the compliance model highlights dimensional standards that are proposed by a community that would require additional review by HLC when they receive our final compliance application. So we had initially proposed that district to have fifty-foot side and rear setbacks. Looking at the Cove in particular, those setbacks maybe seem excessive given that all the surrounding properties are undeveloped or publicly owned. They, they're not. So we've got Lynch Field on one side and Bear Cove Park on the other sides. So it, it, in order to avoid additional review by HLC, we proposed to drop those to twenty feet from fifty feet. Whoops. And then this one other change in Subdistrict Two that seems to be hidden by one of my screens, but hopefully you guys can see it, is to decrease the frontage requirement for the Avalon One Multifamily Building to reflect the frontage that we were able to verify on a recorded plan. So that again is intended to avoid additional review from HLC for something that may not be consistent with the parcels in their current configuration. So that's a high-level review of your new MBTA Article LLL. We will now go back to GGG. I'm sorry that my computer seems to not really be behaving tonight, but I, my slides are again not advancing. There we go. They're just delayed. Okay, so the proposed French Street Subdistrict. This is part of Article GGG, the initial MBTA Communities Multifamily Zoning article. It proposed to include three parcels which, you know, are right now, they're located in a residential district, as you know, but are presently being used as a non-conforming contractor's yard. You can see this yellow radius right here. This is the half-mile distance from the East Weymouth Commuter Rail Station. So these properties would qualify toward our twenty-five percent allowed portion of the district that does not fall within a transit area, but they're just barely outside of the transit area. This is about point six miles from East Weymouth and about point eight from the West Hingham Commuter Rail Station. And I guess with that introduction, because and, you know, maybe just a reminder that on February twelfth, the board appointed a another working group to look at potential changes to Article GGG, particularly with respect to this portion of the district in order to address some of the board's concerns and some of the comments that we heard from the public. And so Tracy, if you can see my screen, I I, you know, as Kevin had suggested at the outset, be happy to have you review this slide.
Sure. So we made it, we proposed a handful of changes to GGG. They're kind of bullet pointed at the top here. The first was to segregate the French Street into its own separate sub-district. So you see on the chart here, we now have Subdistrict Five at the bottom. Everything's in red because that's one of the that's a proposed change. We eliminated the Fort Hill Parcels, which are on the map, kind of the top, the kind of the blue ones. That reduced the overall acreage to eight point five nine acres, of which six point nine eight is developable. We decreased the, we proposing to decrease the density from eighteen down to eight units and then eight times that, eight point five nine is where you get the sixty-nine maximum units on this smaller site. One way we were able to do that was if you see on Subdistrict One, we proposed to increase that density from, I believe it was forty up to forty-two. And then I think this brings the overall number to like fourteen hundred and ninety-three units when we're required to do to provide zoning to allow fourteen hundred and ninety. So we have just this, you know, smallest little buffer there of what's required. We also are looking to reduce the permanent forms of the multifamily or restrict the permanent forms of multifamily to either two-family units, three-family units or multi-unit dwellings. So we're trying to reduce the the size of any structure that would would be on here to two-family, three-family or multi-unit, you might consider those kind of like townhouses or or something like that. And then we're looking for a way to make sure that on the the street side, we reduce the scale even more. And so that's what that last footnote or last bullet point is, is trying to make sure that those multi-unit dwellings would have to be set back a certain number of feet, like two hundred feet or a hundred fifty feet or something to kind of really make sure that those were only occurring more in the center of the site to keep the scale of the neighborhood and and the street kind of the same, similar to what it is now. So the red that you see on District Two and District Three, Emily's already touched on those, because those are changes that we'd be doing in either of these articles. And then you can see the setbacks and they're on the bottom line, front yard at fifty feet, side yard at twenty, rear at twenty. Again, very similar to Subdistrict Three, that's kind of like the the biggest we can push these and still make the compliance model work. You see the the maximum density of eight units there in the middle, an FAR of point three five. So this is the the, you know, lowest amount of floor area ratio that's being proposed in any of these sub-districts. Reducing the maximum height to two and a half stories or thirty-five feet. You know, our zoning law, zoning code already has, you know, single-family homes can actually reach thirty-five feet, so. And then a minimum lot side, lot frontage of of two hundred. And I think those are the, that's the gist of the proposed changes that we're looking to make.
Thanks, Tracy. Emily, are you, you have more after this? I don't want to cut you off.
There there is one more slide just to give you kind of a visual of what these densities might look like.
Sure.
My screen is not advancing again. There we go. But Tracy, do you want to do this one or do you?
Yeah, yeah. So the the examples on the left here, comparable developments were fifteen units an acre. Again, originally we were proposing up to eighteen units an acre on the French Street site. So this is just to give you an idea of kind of where we were. The Avalon Townhomes are eighteen units an acre. Edmund Hills seventeen and a half. The Bridges Community is a little less at twelve units an acre. And then this proposed change to reduce the number of of units per acre down to eight. We have some examples here on the right. Back River, Hewitt's Landing, Beals Cove Village and Adams Court are all, you know, six point four up to seven point three. So these are all just a little slightly under eight, but I think give a good idea but some visuals and and in people's minds of what these may look like.
And Tracy, your your suggestion of kind of, not the right word is like, layering the zoning, if that's the right expression, kind of where the front of the parcel might be restricted to one kind of feature in the back more. You might suggest that the front might have something more like two-family style homes. And then the back might be more like that's the concept we were talking about?
Yeah, looking for a way to limit that to the two or three family units, not the not the multi-unit.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Tracy. Very helpful. So a lot of members of the public in the call, which is great. So boards, the first time we've heard and kind of seen a presentation on the on the center of the purchase, the Beale Street Parcel, just so when we're talking and members of public are kind of kind of go through the code of the, you know, the the districts and the zoning. Maybe let's start there with any questions on that or just general discussion about that. So I think tonight, part of the, I mean, we have a couple of options. We can advance the changes to the all the sub-districts and choose to move forward with the French Street Subdistrict in some form, move forward with the Beale Street Districts in some form, assuming we accept all the others. Or in the alternate, we could move forward with both of them if that's what the planning board wants to have. I think those are kind of the three options. We don't have to decide on that tonight necessarily. But I think it would be helpful to leave this meeting having some direction so we can refine what we want to do with those. You know, another option is to, I suppose, to go forward to town meeting with kind of a an alternate proposal. You know, we have this or this, and the town meeting decide. I'll say I'm personally not in favor of that. I think it's the planning board's job to make a recommendation and we should make a recommendation for what we think is right. And, you know, town meeting will vote on that recommendation certainly, but we make a recommendation about what we think the right approach is. But that that is another potential option that we could explore. So I just don't want to foreclose anything if the board disagrees with me. So I've talked enough. Any questions for the board? We can talk about them both together, but I just want to make sure we're kind of going through this a bit systematically. Gordon, go ahead, please.
Sure. First, many thanks to to Gary and Tracy for doing that analysis. I think it's it's responsive to a lot of the concerns or at least directionally responsive to a lot of the concerns that we'd heard in previous hearings. It shows our ability to to be creative on this. I think the sort of Back River in front and something else in back kind of approach that Tracy's suggesting sounds very, very positive if in fact that's the district we choose to advance. Certainly, the William Terry Drive would would get us there. I guess my questions are for Emily related a little bit to the RKG report and to the affordability LLS. Because as you say, that's not required in the in the legislation, but it is a discretionary option for us to go up to twenty percent. It looks like RKG, you know, with a whole raft of assumptions, said fifteen percent affordability would would be economically feasible as a development project that that assumes no complications and all that kind of stuff. And find me a project that has that. But the, I guess my question is, A, we would need a blessing from HLC in order to include something greater than ten percent. And and I'm right, though, that that is an option, not a requirement at that point, right? Somebody could still propose purely market rate housing. Or are we imposing a fifteen percent affordability requirement in the districts?
Yeah, the way both articles are drafted presently is that it would be an imposition. So a requirement of anyone seeking site plan approval from this board for by right multifamily zoning would be that a minimum of ten percent of the units qualify on our subsidized housing inventory or fifteen percent if approved by DH, excuse me, HLC. So the the language in both pending articles right now targets fifteen percent, but says in the event the DH, HLC, excuse me again, doesn't approve fifteen percent, then the fallback.
Yeah, well, the the RKG report will then, I think, be quite helpful, right? Because Lexington requested fifteen and was denied because they thought it was some stealthy way of of blocking development. Now, there's been a lot written about this legislation. If you recall, the last time we met was the eve of the Milton Town Vote. And the rhetoric since then about Milton and how, you know, Milton must be crushed and, you know, forced into like the the verbiage is a little unsettling. But the other element of a lot of that narrative is that while it's not in the legislation, certainly the spirit of the intent is more affordability, right? Like that. In fact, so much of the reporting refers to creating housing and creating affordable housing when we all now know on this that it doesn't do either one of those things, right? This is this is a zoning exercise only at this stage. So I think I'm in favor of of advancing fifteen percent or at least seeking approval to do so, depending on the district that that we choose. And but I'm I'm appreciative of the analysis also done on William Terry that does provide that as an option. And I am going to stop. Thank you.
Gordon, thank you. And thank you for raising the affordability piece. I apologize. That is obviously also new tonight. I think we had touched on the idea that it might be presented and we were exploring it. But this is the first iteration of kind of presentation we've had on it. So thank you, Gordon. So board members. No, 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 that's that's absolutely on point. Thank you very much. Gary, do you want to go ahead? I mean, you certainly kind of sort of trace on this kind of subcommittee. You know, I I know that restrictions in that area are somewhat, I don't want to say speculative, but we'd still have to work on them if the board decides to move forwards. I don't want to talk, I don't I don't think I want to get into too much, you know, you know, ingrained in the detail what they would look like because we still need to explore them. But I know you've had some interesting thoughts on this and, you know, welcome your thoughts and kind of what other thoughts you had on the sub-district as well as the Beale Street Parcel.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, I have a number of comments. So relative to, you know, leaving our last meeting, we had talked about optimizing the 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 sub-districts. And I think in as a result of that, we've come up with some interesting ideas in terms of the French Street Subdistrict. I think it's a great idea that we isolate, separated that out from the rest of the sub-districts, gives us some flexibility and then also some opportunities we have in the in the the Beale Street Parcels and the one Terry Sergeant Terry Way Parcel. One of the things that comes to mind is is that we wanted to do a an approach or pursue an approach. And we talked about this in our working group where we wanted to approximate the scale and density and the physical character as much as we could of the districts in context with their surrounding residential districts. And in in so doing and looking at several of, and and also in addition to that, there was also a a sense to look at the identity of what we were looking at in terms of the housing types. And so if we look in the bylaw and, you know, we have Section 5E, it's a residential townhouse form, which can be interpreted to interpret, you know, in terms of many scales. But in trying to approximate the two dwelling units per acre, which is essentially what the current French Street and Fort Hill zoning is and density is, and then also looking at some of the of the house types, they range from single-family and there are some two families. The idea that comes to mind is how do we minimize the size of the individual buildings so that it doesn't appear as a congregate kind of an aggregate of a large multifamily, multifamily building? And so this is looking at some of the ways we could do this. You know, right now, if we're at eight units per acre proposed in the French Street Parcel as a way of optimizing within the compliance model, we have a fixed endpoint of fourteen ninety-three. I'm also seeing another opportunity here where with in 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 the context of looking at the Beale Street Parcel, which which meets the locational goals relative to this multifamily, the MBTA Community Statute of being close to amenity-rich areas and also being close to public transportation. I was thinking, could we take a look at a density review potential on the Beale Street Parcel in conjunction with the French Street Parcel? If we have fundamentally in excess of a hundred units here now, could we kind of split the difference and could we say, could we get down to a four-unit-per-acre density at the French Street Parcel and perhaps within that, within the current fifteen-unit a density on the on the Beale Street Parcel and the Sergeant Terry Way Parcel? I'm just trying to figure if we can optimize this such that we can get a little bit closer in scale and density to the existing residential neighborhoods while still providing providing for smaller buildings, two or three family, for example.
Gary, can I just pause you there? I, you know, that's a great question because and I I asked council to look at the same questions. I just, I think it's worth addressing and having Susan Murphy, if it's okay, just interject on that. Because to me, that intuitively where, you know, would make some sense. And I asked the same question and I think unfortunately the answer is not going to be to your satisfaction. Susan, if you don't mind, please go ahead. I'm going to be on the spot here.
Sure, no problem. Susan Murphy, I'm Special Real Estate Counsel. So Gary, thank you for the question. I know Kevin Hen, as he mentioned, had asked a very similar question and I've I've discussed it with Emily as well. And the the guidelines from the state are are very clear about their concern of communities going to one extreme or the other with the with the permitted unit count. There is a there is a provision in here and I'm just, I apologize, I'm just scrolling to get to it. Where I, and I apologize because I had the language here. Oh, I'm in the wrong section. Apologize. I got it. I got it. So it said, EOHLC, which is the state agency that's going to be reviewing for compliance with the state statute, will review sub-districts to ensure that the density allowed as of right in each sub-district is reasonable and not intended to frustrate the purpose of Section 3A. You know, and and it speaks to making it such a high density that it won't be constructed. We believe based on a lot of feedback that's coming even outside of the guidelines and there is a lot coming at us very fast, that that's also going to be looking at underzoning. So where the average across is supposed to be fifteen units per acre. And if the town were to come in at something as low as four, the state could bounce the entire district for that purpose. We looked at some pre-preapproval feedback that HLC has given in other communities of the of the ten preapproval letters that we've been able to get so far as a public records request. There's only one town, Lincoln, that has any districts that are below fifteen units per acre. And the lowest that they have is eight units. That did that did receive kind of preapproval, their units level. But there is concern if if you're going below even fifty percent of that fifteen units per acre and considerably below like at, you know, a quarter of what the fifteen units per acre is. And I'll note too, as although the zoning that the town is presenting, you know, and, you know, is all technically compliant, the other sub-districts that are being proposed outside of the shipyard are are the, you know, the ones where, you know, the 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 ones where, you know, the, the housing in the shipyard is relatively new from a construction standpoint. Um, and it would be taking the districts where there's maybe a more of a likelihood that at some point, maybe not next year, but say in the next ten years, that something could be built there and making it almost single-family home density. I, I would just cut, it's a call for the board to make, obviously from a policy standpoint. But I do have, I would caution the board that it, it could be given a critical eye by the state.
If I could. So one of the things that I was looking at this is essentially we're providing an approach here, a proposal. It's a range of scales, a range of densities. Cause I don't see, you know, every, every neighborhood in the town is unique and we have high-density areas in the shipyard. We have medium-density areas along Beale Street and we have low-density areas and other, other areas of the town. And it just seemed to me, you know, one size doesn't fit all. And this was an approach where we could say, okay, this is a performance-based, would be a performance-based compliance model where we could adjust densities and we exceed the overall average of fifteen. We're not trying to do anything to subvert anything. We're just trying to do something that, which is good planning, which is to approximate the existing densities of the different settlement neighborhood areas in the town. That's all. That's where I was coming from on this.
Yeah, Gary, I look, I, I think I had the same question because I think it's the right way to think about it. Um, I'll, I'll posit that I'm just going to be guided by Susan here that if we go below eight, I think we run the risk of having rejection. And I think setting us up for being rejected is not the direction I would choose to go in. I mean, obviously it's up to the board's discussion. It's, it's our call here. But I think allowing for that permitting to, for my perspective, just going to draw scrutiny. And it's very clear, incredibly clear that the AG's office and the HLC are looking at these like with a, an unreasonably, I don't know, unreasonable eye towards rejection, quite frankly. I mean, so it's, it's, um, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense to go in that direction. But, you know, that's my, that's my thing in my voice.
And if I just one final, if I could, I guess.
Yeah, please.
The unbelievable contradiction, and I know this is editorial comment, but I have to make it. You know, here we are, the unbelievable irony of this whole thing is we can't use MBTA property to address an MBTA statute initiative, based initiative from the state. And we can't basically say we'd like to tailor it so that it's unique to qualitative, uh, planning in the town. It, it just, I know, I know I can't do anything about that, but it's just, the irony is just incredible.
I'll see and raise you, Gary, because, because of what we know about some of the, uh, obstacles to developing the French Street parcel relative to wastewater and traffic and all that kind of thing. A four or five unit, uh, per acre density is likely to be much, is, is much more likely to be developed than eighteen, right?
Right.
But that's not a factor that the legislation provides, right? So, um, they, they want to force a, a density level. Cause stop calling it an average, right? Fifteen is not the average if they want fifty, right? Like, um, you know, uh, if, if they're going to scrutinize anything less than fifteen, then stop calling it an average, right? And, um, but, right, we're screaming it, you know, the wall right now because we're, we're in the situation that we're, we're in. Um, I mean, I, I'm in complete agreement with Kevin that our goal is compliance here. Um, and I, and I will say that the efforts that you and Tracy made to get to eight
Yeah.
is, 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 you know, material progress. Um, and still will, uh, would if, if developed, um, be dramatically better, uh, than something at, at, at a level of eighteen. Um, and I don't, yeah, I'm, I'm, I agree with Kevin also. They're, they are inclined to say no, uh, to anything that might be a reasonable alternative.
Thanks, Gordon. Uh, you, you, Trace, obviously you've spoken already, Rita, um, any additional thoughts? I'm inclined after, you know, after hearing from you guys, I'll turn over the public with some of their thoughts about the presentation tonight. And then I'd like to circle back. I think we do really need to think about what direction we want to go in. Um, I don't think we're going to necessarily, um, at least I was not expecting personally to vote on this is what we'll do as it enters the planning board recommendation. But we have next week a scheduled meeting. We can meet again in the interim. But, um, we are running up against the warrant printing deadline. And I'm inclined just to give the town as much notice about what's here as possible to, to get this in the printed warrant. Because I think that's an important feature of town meeting that people can read it and think about it, ask questions about it and try to understand it. And the oftened option is for it to appear when you walk into town meeting as a handout. I just, I don't think it does all this work service if we do that. So I, I'm working backwards from that warrant printing deadline, which is, Emily, I won't hold you to this, but March twenty-fourth, fifth, something like that.
Twenty-six, yeah.
Twenty-six, okay. So that's the lay of the land where we are. So all that, I keep on talking, Rita, go ahead.
I think it first gather, listen to the public first and it's just a, I want to hear their feedback.
Sure, sure. Trace, anything else to add before we get to the public?
No, I'm okay.
Perfect. All right. So members of the public.
I don't want to rule out the idea, not that, um, we're cowardly on the planning board. And I understand your, uh, your suggestion that we, we should advance something. Um, I just don't want to rule out the idea of us advancing two options, right? Because, you know, Milton could have gone in a very different direction if their town meeting had two options, for example, right? Um, or if the ballot question had two options, you know, um, because it was binary in both of those situations. That's where they were, you know, exposed in jeopardy and ultimately into non-compliance. So I, I just don't, that may end up being a bad idea. I just don't want to, uh, I just want to keep it alive for purposes of this conversation.
Perfect. Gordon makes perfect sense and wholeheartedly agree. I'm just trying to lay out kind of the, what are our options? And, and I think we should consider them all and that's, that's our job. Um, all right. So with that, members of the public, um, for those who haven't been here before, welcome. And those of you that are returning, uh, we welcome you back. Um, just state your name and address for the record. If you'd like to speak, uh, you know, our forty-eight people on the call. And you have some of them are planning board members, obviously. Um, so try to limit comments to two, three minutes each. Um, and obviously kind of trying to kind of additive comments as opposed to repeating what we've heard. Um, and with that, I'd welcome your feedback. So Anne Fenton, I see your, your hands raised there. Uh, just name and address for the record and go ahead.
Oh, uh, Anne Fenton, forty-six Ridgewood Crossing. I was going to show my picture, but I can't seem to do that quickly and easily now. So sorry.
That's all right.
I was unable to attend the February twelfth hearing. And I wrote very brief comment, but it was too late. Um, I would have then supported the article with the French Street proposal as it existed then. But even more so, the new article GGG, which still includes, um, rezoning for this purpose, the land on French Street currently used by, for a contractor's yard. Um, mainly because I think it's important that we as a town, not for this purpose of the MBTA requirements, not put all our eggs in one basket and that one basket would be the ferry. I know it sounds as though you're, you, you're not under that requirement so that perhaps this won't be important to the state. I feel that way as someone who does want to see us make more housing, um, available to the public. Want to meet the intent of this law, but the ferry is considerably more expensive than commuter rail. Um, it only goes to a couple of places. The commuter rail goes to many places, as you know. So that's what I mean by not all the eggs in one basket. So I support having something that is not just within walking distance of the ferry. And this is close to not just commuter rail, but to a very active, um, town center in East Weymouth. Um, I, I can walk there and I live in Ridgewood Crossing, which is senior housing. Um, so I think it's a good idea to keep it. As for how I feel with regard to the issues that were raised at the last hearing. I, I don't like the heavy truck traffic. I didn't hear that last time. I don't like it at all on French Street and I walk the entire area all the time. Um, it's not only to me dangerous and noisy, but it's destroying the road surface on French Street. So I, I know it's probably not going to be in my lifetime, but I would love to see the truck traffic go away. And I didn't hear that from others. Um, secondly, I am very much troubled whenever I see in the summertime the huge plumes of dust raising in the air, not your, um, responsibility. I realized I should call the Board of Health, but, um, from the construction yard. It is, it is definitely a health hazard, PM two point five and should be hosed down. I should issue a complaint to the town. I don't expect to see a change, but it should be. So those are the reasons, whether it'll go away or not, um, I do support this article. And I think it's a small piece of the overall attempt you're making to meet the purposes of the new state mandate. And I do think it would be ideal to make it, um, as attractive, economically attractive as possible to change from perhaps what it currently is used for or when it finally gets sold. And it may not be if you downzone it too much, which is one of the, one of the items that's being discussed before you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fenton. I appreciate it. Any other members of the public? Just, um, just speak up, name and address for the record, or you can electronically raise your hand and I'll look around for you. Uh, Natalie and Jack Whitmore, looks like. Natalie and Jack Whitmore? We can't hear you if you are speaking, so I'm going to move on and we'll certainly circle back to, uh, Mr. Tim Perkins.
Yep. Okay. Thank you very much, Tim Perkins, One Brookfield Way. Uh, hang on, of course, um. First of all, I just want to thank the planning board for taking the people here in the neighborhood, taking us, uh, you know, listening to us, taking us serious. Some good thoughts came back and some substantive changes have been made as a result. I, I very much agree with the changes to, uh, a separate, uh, a separate overlay as well as the changes to the, the density and the size, uh, being much more on the density of Fort Hill Street currently than of what was previously proposed. So I think that's a, a reasonable compromise, uh, keeping the size down and reasonable and in keeping, more keeping with the neighborhood. Uh, you know, my, my fervent hope and desire is that, uh, it, it's, it stays in the, in the family there for years. But, uh, if not, then this is a good compromise. And I thank you for taking us, uh, listening to us and trying to make some changes and trying to keep every, everybody happy within a pretty tough situation. So, uh, just, that's all. Just thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Much appreciated.
You guys do a lot of, a lot of thankless work, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, Judy, I see you there. I just didn't want to go off of the Whitmoors if they're still on the call. I'm not sure I see them, but if you are, you can certainly go ahead. All right, I'm not seeing him. Judy Sneath, please go ahead.
Hi there. Um, I really just wanted to commend you all for that, um, refinement of the French Street parcel. Um, I agree with both of the prior callers. I think it's a great improvement and really makes it a viable kind of part of the, the districts and brings a little bit of geographic, um, diversity. Shares a little bit of the density, um, with the residential neighborhood. And I think that is, yeah, good job. So thank you.
Thank you, Judy, very much. What else on the call? Uh, Ms. Bellas, please go ahead.
Oh, I'm just echoing what my neighbors are saying. I'm so impressed by your willingness to listen to the neighbors and for French Street in particular, and to make modifications, um, that are meaningful. And really, uh, this is, this was a very positive experience for me with the planning board. So thank you all. I'm very impressed with your diligence and your work and your listening to your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bellas, very much. Anybody else on the call? I am not seeing anyone. If there's anyone else that wants to speak up, please just raise your hand. Oh, uh, Mr. Donnelly, please go ahead.
Sorry, I'm on Zoom calls all week, so it's funny on the weekend. Any evenings I have problems getting, turning it on. But I would like to thank you guys for all the work, uh, echoing my neighbors. Um, this has really been a interesting experience for me. And I would like to thank everyone for the work you've put into listening to the neighborhood and looking for other, you know, coming up with some solutions that, um, will help us meet our compliance requirement, uh, that the state has, uh, put on us. So I just want to say thank you and, uh, appreciate all the work that the, uh, group has put into this.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Any other members of the public? Not seeing anyone directly here. Um, if so, I'm not looking to foreclose the conversation. Please just raise your hand and speak up. But I'll, I'll, I'll circle back to the board here. Um, I mean, Gordon started us in the path, but Tracy, Gary, thank you. I think you can see a really positive reception from the public. So, um, you know, to you, big thanks from me and Emily. I, I know, I know that a lot of this work rests on your shoulders and, uh, you, you with Susan the mic, so I much appreciate it. So board, I mean, Gordon had brought up the idea of advancing kind of, um, a word is like bifurcated, almost kind of a two, two-tiered approach or two-pronged approach. Um, we can do that if, and, and I think we would do that maybe if we feel like one certain about, I mean, go ahead, I want to put words in your mouth, the one certain about the path we want to pursue. Or if we feel like they're just, we have kind of two even options and we, we want, you know, the town to consider both options and go forward. Um, I would like to have Real Estate Council think about what happens if the town does pass both options. Uh, or if we can present this as one or the other. So I'm not expecting we'll get an answer on that tonight. But I just don't know if that creates a problem for us. So before we go in that direction, I just would all want to understand that. But, I mean, let, let's talk more about what direction we think we're heading in or what we, what we see in these two your potential districts and, and what we'd like to, what we'd like staff and maybe our, kind of our subcommittee to pursue a little further, um, if anything. Or we can give staff and, and the subcommittee some direction, um, about what direction we would like to go in.
Well, let's, do, do we need to actually check and see if eight um, per acre will, is acceptable to HLC? Before we advance such a thing, given how parsimonious they've been on such discretion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll let Susan answer that. My, my understanding is that we're not going to get a pre-approval to that degree. And, uh, it, it, not that it's a little bit, but yeah. Uh, Susan, I want to speak for you. Please go ahead.
Well, Gordon, what I can tell you is that, um, Lincoln, Massachusetts, um, did, was able to get theirs in very early. So they got a, a, a pre-vote review letter. They're not pre-approvals. They're just feedback letters. Um, so even with the feedback letters, it doesn't necessarily mean that if they adopt exactly what they sent to HLC, it'll get approved. So that's the other caveat. They're just feedback letters. But they, they did submit one that had, I believe, four districts. And, um, two of those districts were acre, one was twelve and one was eight. And in the feedback letter that they got, which was varied on a whole bunch of different issues, just, there's a lot of GIS plans that have to get submitted, that type of thing. There was a lot of feedback about their GIS plans and some other technical aspects of their bylaw. Um, there were no concerns raised about the, um, eight and twelve unit per acre subdistricts. So, you know, like I said, I, I can't say they wouldn't approve less than eight. All I know is that another town submitted eight and did not get negative feedback. I have not, so like I said, we haven't seen any other communities go lower than that. So.
But we, but we should feel reasonably confident advancing in a, uh, uh, density unit, uh, district at this stage, right? Okay.
I guess one thought I might have on that is that, um, we have two proposals in front of us and it gives us the flexibility. If, if the, if the, if the task here is compliance, um, and compliance strategies. It seems to me that we know that we have a French Street proposal that at eight units we think can make work. And it would meet the, uh, would meet the, um, requirements, uh, or the, the desires of the, the neighboring residents. Um, we haven't heard completely from town meeting on either of these. And I'm kind of leaning towards, it would be nice, it's such an important decision for the town. Decision for the town. It would be nice to go to the town with, with some options and let the town ultimately make an intelligent decision comparing options. On the other hand, um, you know, I'm thinking that as a contingency plan. If the state rejects the eight units per acre at French Street, I think the 15 unit. Uh, per acre at French Street would be a, a different kind of ballgame as we've seen in different me, uh, our prior meetings. In terms of being a radical departure from the, the density in the, in the, in the surrounding neighborhoods. And we also have a, uh, we have a, a, a model here that we say that 15 units per acre at, uh, Beale Street. Is consistent with the zoning on Beale Street. Um, I'm sensitive to the discussions over the last several years about density. On Beale Street, but the highest density is really the Cove and the rest of the densities along Beale Street are closer to this 15. So. Per acre. So I, I like the idea of a contingency plan and perhaps, and also having, you know, town meeting, given the option to. Decide between two really good options. Or decide that one option is better. I, I would, I'd hesitate to come back if the state were, we only presented one option and the state rejected it at eight. Units per acre. I'm not sure we'd really like to, to be backed into a corner with only one option in front of us. That's not really acceptable to the, to, to, at least in terms of feedback that I've heard over our last several meetings.
So, so Gary, you're thinking that if, 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 um. And I hear you. So you're thinking that, um, i- if we move forward to options, the town meeting and town advance, town meeting advance one of them, which. Presumably would be the outcome. There's no real fallback at that point because they've still, we still have advanced and voted on and adopted one set of zoning that the state would then approve, right? That still would be the fact pattern.
It, it, it would, but I think, um, it's such an important decision. It just seems to me that it should be. Vetted on the floor of town meeting. We can make, uh, we can make, um, you know.
Yeah, now, I know I was, I was in favor, I was the one that was saying, let's not rule out the. The, the, the dual possibility, but I guess thinking about it. We've done this. Technically six times with hearings, right? Not including the, the hearings that we, you know, um, in, in the, in the fall. It's just going to be very hard for town meeting to, to absorb, socialize, intellectualize, uh, and conclude. On the floor of town meeting, uh, all of that, which is to Kevin's point, which is. It's on us to figure all that out and put something, uh, forward. Um, because I'm, I am pretty certain, however the warrant is set up, only one of these two things can pass, right? And so. Um, you know, we will, we, we are potentially boxed either way as we would be otherwise. So. Um, it is a big decision. But how quickly things change. I'm, I'm a little more on the, uh. Uh, selecting one and advancing it, although probably not this evening.
No, that, that, Gordon, that's the point of the discussion. I mean, to kind of hear these ideas out, think about them and air them and get people some, I don't, you know, I don't think it's, um, how quickly things change. I think it's just talking through it. Uh, Susan, you want to go ahead? I don't know if you've.
I just asked.
Oh, Rita, go ahead, please. Yeah, of course.
So I actually want to ask Susan, what would be the worst case scenario if we did the eight units on French Street? And they rejected it? What would be the worst case scenario?
Well, I think it, if the zoning doesn't get a determination of compliance, which is ultimately what the town needs to apply. For after there's a vote at town meeting, um, you know, and let's, let's just assume for. Hope that that's the only reason. I mean, regardless of what the reason is, if, that the town doesn't get a, a determination of compliance for any reason. Um, at that point, the town's deadline is still December 31st. Um, and I think the expectation would be from the state that the town. Hold another meeting, a special town meeting and, and, and fix whatever they say need to be fixed. I, I think we're, if they were to. Send it back to the town unapproved, that, that is the option. The other options are not to do anything this year, wait till next year. And potentially risk other consequences, the loss of funding, you know. Whether or not they're going to sue any other towns, we don't know. Like, we know what they've done to one for one community. Um, they also did, as people may remember, some of the towns that didn't come into interim compliance on a timely basis. One of the funding sources that can be lost is funding to housing authorities. They did pull funding from housing authorities. Um, I, I'm just, you know, I'm just reporting the facts here. Um, so listen, I, Rita, I wish I could answer that, but I would say the most. Practical answer for the town, if it wanted to still meet the deadline, would be to have to call a special town meeting. I mean, we're doing everything that we can behind the scenes to get as much information as possible so that. If the town does elect to adopt the, a zoning amendment, that it be approved. Um, and I, and I think to both, um, Gary and Gordon's point, you know, there's, there's a few things happening. So first. The, the planning board is asked under the statute to make a report to town meeting. The report is whatever report. The planning board wants to do. It's an advisory report. It's not binding typically, you know, and there's been very few instances of. That I can ever think of that the planning, that town meeting didn't agree with the planning board's recommendation, but they don't have to. It's not binding. Um, likewise with the advisory committee, right? They, they make the recommended motion. Um, they can agree, disagree. I would say that, you know, and I can't speak for the advisory committee. But you really can only have, you know, I, and like, like, uh, I'm sorry, I'm not finishing a sentence here. Like Kevin said, I, I need to go back and look at what happens if two competing articles for the same purpose pass. I. I think you end up with two MBTA communities, but I have to check that. But. You know, if advisory were to say, well, listen, there's two articles. And we have, we're going to recommend one and not the other. I can't speak for them, or maybe they recommend neither. Um, I, I mean, I think it puts advisory committee. In the position from whatever feedback they get from their liaisons to. Pick between the two sub-districts, right? Between French Street and Beale Street. Um, without the benefit of all the hearings you've had, but you know, that's. That's just the complications of it all. Again, it's, it's fully within the board's purview to make those choices. As to what you want to come out of your hearing process. I just want to make one more note. Um. There's a really important, um. Program that's happening on Wednesday that Emily and I and, um, maybe Mike are attending and, um, in fact, and one of the moderators on it. In which we're going to get feedback from the AG's office. This is the municipal law unit, not the AG. Division that's suing people, but the one that helps municipalities. So the municipal law unit and the, um, and the HLC. Are actually going to be, um, providing feedback based on everything they've reviewed to date from different communities. On what to do, what not to do. We might have an opportunity to ask this eight unit question. Um, and so I just want to let you know, we might be able to have more information this week. I can't promise. Like, we're not going to have an answer for Hingham on this particular. You know, zoning article, because that's not being presented to an official to review, but I think we can get some more sense. On what HLC is seeing on this averaging and what, whether there's a number that's, you know. Too high, too low, whatever. So if we can get more feedback this week, we will, we will do that for you.
Thanks, Susan. Thank you very much. So from the board's perspective, um, you know, my sense is there's some interest in, in, in the French Street parcel at eighty. Eight, eight, it's an acre and, and this kind of layered approach that Tracy described, that Gary kind of helped, helped describe, um. And we want to, one, get a more concrete sense of what that could look like and what the drafting would look like for that, Emily. I mean, I think that probably falls more to staff. But kind of how that would appear in the, in the article itself, um, is, we, we do want to look at the language itself, um. Is that an accurate description from the board? Would you like staff to go back and do that? I mean, I guess, I guess the question is, do we want them to do that? Or are we convinced that the, the Beale Street corridor is the right one and we want to foreclose the French Street? Because if that's the answer, then there's no, there's no need to further that task.
I guess I'd like to get a sense of what the, um, what would the, the Beale Street, Street parcel, um. You know, layout kind of options be, you know, what kind of densities and is it just 15? And we talked about it just very quickly in terms of numbers, but. Just as a comparison. I'm not sure, okay, each and on the Beale Street parcel to make a decision between the two.
Sure. So the idea would be, Gary, that we potentially look at kind of what 42, and I use the word upzoning, but 42 at the Cove would look like. You, you're kind of comparing apples to apples and what that would do to Beal and, and what we think we could do with that. I mean, look, that's certainly reasonable. Um, Emily, don't hate us for just kind of suggesting more work to do, but, um, that's, uh. Um, Rita, Gordon, Tracy, I mean.
I'm on board with, um, Gary. I'd like to see kind of both. With, with the eight, uh, you know, with French Street, with the eight units per acre and also without French Street. So. I'd like to kind of see both.
Okay. So basically you want a more refined French Street proposal and, and essentially a more refined Beale Street proposal. Okay. Tracy, Gordon, is that directions you're headed? I mean, is that, I mean, so just again, for timing, we could, we could talk about that next Monday, not a problem. Potentially could set up a meeting for, you know, we could do it tonight. We could kind of set up a meeting for Tuesday or Wednesday, just so it's on the agenda to further that conversation if we need to, um. We're all going to hate zoning after this, um, exercise, but, um, you know, I just, again, my goal is to make a recommendation and I would really like that recommendation to be possible. So this printed in the warrant, so the entire town can look at it. So that, you know, you might disagree and you should voice that, but I think that's an important. Bogey to hit in terms of timing.
Agreed. Um, and short of pulling Jen Gay Smith out of retirement to do her. You know, series of if then statements that we had for the medical marijuana a few years ago, which was this whole layered. Thing, which is sort of what we'd be looking at here. Like, if this passes, then this, then that, then the other thing, which I. I don't think anybody at town meeting ever wants to live through again. So I, I would agree with that. One, one, um. Aspect though, that I would welcome some input from Emily and Susan on, at whenever we reconvene is. By adding the William Terry Drive District to this and really heavily loading it on. Uh, in, in that area of town, will that equally be looked on unfavorably by HLC for some? Potential reason. Well, just not knowing what, you know, what, what triggers them and what doesn't, right? I, you know, I don't want to think that we've got some. Some safe haven that we may not have.
All, all I can give you is my educated kind of guesses, Gordon, on this, right? Um, because I won't be sitting in the room when they're reviewing these things, but you know, it's, it's within a station, it's within a station area. So, um, I, I would find it difficult to. Imagine them rejecting it all being in a, a single district area. Because that is permitted. Um, so, you know, but in the same way, you know, you are allowed, you know, they wouldn't reject. Or look, turn their noses down at the French Street parcel either because you're allowed to have 25% outside. So I think. All of the options that are on the table are within the allowable locations.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, Gordon, for us, I mean. I, I think that's probably one of the decisions the board's going to think about, you know, what, what do we think of that Beale Street corridor and, and the French Street, um, you know, location and, and, and our. You know, kind of best guess, you know, through our kind of a planning experience and what, what the impact might be. And how do we feel about concentrating the potential traffic impacts on, on that one quadrant by Beale Street and the shipyard versus. You know, at least ostensibly spreading them out a bit. I mean, I think that's one factor to think about. Certainly a good point to raise. Tracy, any, any, any further refinement you want to ask for from staff? I mean, you're kind of asking this of yourself because I think you're going to go back and be our, you know, with, with Gavin, kind of the subcommittee on the French Street, but.
Yeah. No, I don't have, I don't have any other, uh, asks.
Kevin, can I just, um, mention another aspect of the zoning, um, that the board still needs to consider? So for all the reasons that everyone knows, um, the focus has been on. The, the location of the sub-districts within the district, the den, and the density and kind of setbacks, all of that technical aspects. The article, um, also has to address. You know, other, other topics, like some substantive talk, topics, right? Um, as far as design and elsewhere. Um, since the article was originally proposed in December. There has been, as I said, and we've been tracking a lot of feedback coming out of both the municipal law unit. And HLC, we're going to get even more of it this week and, uh, and what. The board should be and the public should be aware of, the voters should be aware of is it's not just within the four corners of the article that they're reviewing. They are also reading every community zoning bylaw from cover to cover. And what they're doing is they're looking for any provision of your local zoning bylaw. That could be interpreted in a way to be contrary to the, uh, purposes of section three A. And then the community is required to either amend those sections of the bylaw as well or. Exempt or modify those sections within your MBTA community zoning. For the purposes of any projects constructed under that. So Emily and I. Have gone back in the last couple of weeks and reread the zoning bylaw from cover to cover. Um, and you know, the way I did it is I went through with a pencil and I flagged every single place that I, I. I've either seen other communities flagged for it or that I believe could potentially be flagged. And coming out of that exercises are, um. You know, a number of changes to the body of the war, of the, well, it would be in the motion, but. The body of the Warren article. Um, we're going to need to present, we're, we're going to need to present all that to the board. So in addition to the board settling on the locations of the sub-districts. We're going to need some time to walk the board through the, the rest of the body of the, of the, um. The Warren article with our recommended changes to, as I was saying earlier, to do everything possible on both. The staff and legal side to have a, um, a compliant. A compliant zoning amendment. So I, I just, when you are thinking about meetings. Um, you know, I don't know if there's anything else on the agenda next Monday. I know we have the other, uh, South Shore Country Club zoning one. I, I don't anticipate that that should take. The board very much time at all. I think that will be relatively quick. Um, it's mostly a cleanup article. Um, but I don't know if you have any art, um, if you have any applications or any permitting hearings you need to have. And so I, I just want you to factor that in. You had mentioned potentially scheduling a second meeting for next week. I would just say if it works for the board, if you're going to do that and it works for the board, I would say Wednesday's better than Tuesday, just in case. Um, you know, I may need to be at advisory committee on Tuesday night, so. Wednesday would be better for me, but obviously it's whatever's best for the board. So I, I just want to keep in mind you just like. Figuring out the distance is, is kind of the, you know, hard work, but I think understanding all of the other changes. That need to happen, um, within the, the zoning amendment is going to be. A little bit time intensive as well.
Okay.
Couple hours.
Thank you, Susan. That, that's, uh, not how I wanted you to finish that comment, but, um.
I'm sorry.
Um, no, that's, but all right. Um, that, that, thank you. That's very helpful because obviously it kind of brings back my earlier point that we need to look at the text again. Which we've not gotten away from, but we kind of started with the text, we went into, it's really good substance of discussion and we need to get back to that. And that's obviously part of what we're going to move forward. I mean, that is what we're going to move forward at the end of the day. So, um. I, I don't think that changes the board's outlook for tonight. I think we need a bit more information, a bit more work and kind of, kind of see what we want to look. And I think that that's fine. Um. Mike, let's confirm for the 18th. We have nothing else, uh, no permitting applications on the agenda, right?
No, there's, that's, these are the only things, the zoning articles. So I, I was actually going to suggest that. Uh, if folks are available, maybe even starting at six thirty, um, to kind of get ahead a little bit. Um, if, if you think you'll need extra time, um, but if not, then seven is perfectly fine. Um, and then if, if you want, we can post an agenda for Wednesday, just in case it's needed. Um, if folks are available, um, because by, by next Monday night, it'll be too late to post that.
Yeah.
We can post.
Yeah. Thanks, Mike. That's right. Um, so board, what does Wednesday, I mean, I'm very hopeful we can do this. I mean, um. I will work with Susan on getting two hours to be more like, you know, 70 minutes or something like that. She will talk as quickly as I do, um, but, uh, we will get there. Um. But, um, Wednesday, I mean, actually to me, it makes sense to be prepared and, and then just, if we don't need it, we don't need it. Does Wednesday night work for people as, as kind of a back? Wednesday, and actually to me, it makes sense to be prepared and, and then just, if we don't need it, we don't need it. Does Wednesday night work for people as, as kind of a backstop?
And that's just from that Wednesday, the twentieth.
Wednesday, the twentieth, there's a second meeting to schedule now, Gordon.
No, I, I can do, I can do next Monday, but yeah, I'm, I'm away that, that week, but I can. Um, I can join on Monday night. It'd be very difficult for me to join on Tuesday and, and Wednesday, and I'm traveling Thursday.
Okay. So I mean, we're. I think even with that.
So you can do it without me on.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I think we should still set the meeting for Wednesday. I, I am. Very motivated to move forward with this on Monday. I'm gonna, one, I want to have the full board here. I think it's even more motivation. We've all been a part of this and, and I mean, everyone's voice should be heard in the vote. Um. But Wednesday night, Gary, Rita, Tracy, it's just kind of a last resort.
I'm good.
Yeah. If we can keep it to less than ninety minutes, I could do it.
I like that approach, Gary. Um, absolutely. Okay. So um. Michael, let's, I, I think Wednesday makes sense in terms of just kind of preemptively scheduling something um, with the stated goal from the board, you know, Susan and Emily. To get this done on Monday. I, I mean, I, I, I think six thirty start time also makes sense. Does that work for everyone on Monday?
Fine. Six thirty Monday.
Double check, but I, I should.
Six thirty Monday, Rita, just to, so we can try to get through this on Monday. I'd rather go from six thirty to, you know, ten thirty on Monday and get through this than, than kind of reconvene on Wednesday without Gordon. And just having been kind of exhausted by Monday.
Six thirty.
Yeah, and, and Kevin, I'm not suggesting it'll take us.
No, no, I know, I know. I just.
Walk you through it as quickly as possible, and then it, it just depends on how many questions the board has and the back and forth, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Look, I mean, it's good for, I mean, there's, you know, there's been forty-something people on this call. There have been eighty people at some points, different members of the public as well. I mean, this is very substantive and it's, it's very detailed, so it's, it's helpful for everyone involved. Um. All right. So his next step. Tracy, Gary, Emily, any questions about the direction the board is asking to go in vis a vis both the French Street parcel and then. You know, obviously the same subcommittee can look at the Beale Street or Emily, you know, kind of, you know, I think it's really a similar exercise for both. And I guess as part of that would be kind of getting the language down, like how can we do that kind of language where the front portion of parcel looks one way and the back might look another kind of conceptually. I'd also add in there that we want to think about like landscaping. I mean, to me, can we do a, I'm just throwing numbers out there, like a twenty-five, a thirty-five, a fifty foot buffer of trees. What, what, what does that look like there? I mean, one, that's a, you know, a very slow parcel, the two, um, I mean, that might be part of the requirement anyway there. But landscaping goes a long way towards maintaining the streetscape as well. So kind of getting down to that granular level of detail.
Yep.
Perhaps less so on Beale Street, but certainly more on French Street. Um. All right. With that, I think we've done our discussion on this. Um, so I'd make a motion that we continue the discussion of the um. Article G, Articles GGG and LLL to the uh, March eighteenth meeting at a planning board, starting at six thirty PM. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you, Gordon. Um. I think everyone will say yes, but a roll call vote on that. Rita De Silva?
Um, aye.
Gary Tonardick?
Aye.
Tracy Schreiber?
Aye.
And Gordon?
Aye.
And I as well. Um, to members of the public, thank you very much for your participation tonight. Uh, we'll see hopefully most of you next week. Susan, Emily, Michael, thank you. And Tracy and Gary, a special thank you to you. I mean, it's additional meetings during the week on top of this. It's extraordinary work. Thank you very much. I think that brings us to the end of the zoning discussion for tonight. Um, we do have one set of minutes, Mike, right?
Yeah, just a couple of suggested edits from both Emily and Gary.
Do you want to pull them up, Mike?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so um, so you can see that Emily just.
What data these, Mike?
I'm sorry, these are um.
This is the one. Perfect, okay. It's the same one set, okay.
Yeah, 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 yep. Um, so just the red text here.
Yeah, under the um, member Tonardick asked me to do community parking lot, you have, could be included twice, but that's a simple cleanup, not a big deal. Um, one up, two up more your cursor is, Mike.
Oh, thank you. I can make that change. Uh, and then just some additional down here.
It's okay to me. Yeah, those are fine for me as well.
Okay, and then.
Gary, thank you.
Those are from Emily.
Oh, thank you, Emily.
And then Gary, I, I can pull up right now and Gary, if you want to walk through those. Zoom in a little bit.
At least the first, yeah, is that the first paragraph of changes? Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just thought that um. We, we talked about, uh, you know, I, I had mentioned uh, the issue about sort of in our zoning approach or a density approach that we try to approximate the scale. Of the surrounding neighborhoods. We talked about small, same things we talked about tonight, and then this is on the recording, talked about. You know, smaller buildings, it is multifamily, so you know, it's probably two or three families, small as we could get. Potentially, and then just talked about, I had noted a number of other areas of, just for comparative purposes, that were four to eight. Dwelling units per acre. I didn't list them all, but here, but um. And then I did mention about uh, the, you know, looking at commercial, the issue about um. You know, one of the things, one of the things we've seen in the market research um, has been that, that the whole idea of maker spaces uh, in, in the COVID, in post-COVID environment or residence where. Most, a lot of people are working at home and have dedicated spaces, so. Um, just wanted to include those comments.
That's fine with me.
It speaks, it speaks to a newer approach on, on housing program. Um.
That's it.
So that's about it.
Thanks, Gary.
Yep.
Gordon, Rita, Tracy, any, any objections to those proposed changes? All right, I make a motion, we, oh, sorry, make a motion to approve the February twelfth, two thousand twenty fifth meeting minutes of the planning board as reviewed and discussed tonight.
Second, Gary.
Thank you. Um, all in favor, Gordon?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
And Tracy?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, Emily and Michael, anything else for us?
That's all.
Um, I, I just want to remind folks that we'll eventually be looking for um, individual members to volunteer to represent articles um. At town meeting in the event there are questions um, that the advisory committee liaison um, is, is not able to respond to. Um, so. We're taking volunteers. You don't have to decide tonight, but maybe just start thinking about which ones, you know.
Thank you, Emily. You asked me to mention that and I totally neglected to do it, but I appreciate you bringing it up. Yeah, I mean, we have a lot of zoning articles this year, so my expectation, our hope is that. Each of us will take one or two. A lot of them, I don't expect to have questions. The Communities Act. You know, I, I, it's a big one, the advisory, you know, a select board, but um, it's probably the biggest, but um, um. So just think about if there's any particular ones people might have um, some objections to doing or, or have an interest in doing.
And I'll buy you all dinner, just because.
That's right. We're down, we're down a person at the meeting, right, Gordon? You won't be able to tell because they moved the meeting. Yeah, that's right. Rita, you're not gonna be there either? Wow, all right, well.
I didn't know it got changed.
Yeah, Gordon was talking about that, I go, no, no, you're right, look, it didn't, it kind of just got changed without a lot of public fanfare, at least from my perception as well, so um. Okay, well, there's three of us and with nine articles, so then that seems pretty easy now.
Question. Rita, I can split dinner.
On town meeting, um, I wasn't aware that it had changed to Wednesday either until it was mentioned last, uh, last meeting. Um. If this goes two nights, is it going to Thursday or is it going to the following Monday?
I don't have an answer to that question, but I would, Emily.
I, I don't know either. I assume Thursday, but I'll, I'll double check and send you a message tomorrow.
Because Thursday's a problem for me, so.
Yeah, I will um, well, we'll let Emily check it. I guess the town moderator on this one. Um, yeah, I don't know what, when it's been Wednesday nights in the past, what's happened. Um. All I can recall is, yeah, I can only recall going to, you know, indoors now.
Mondays and Saturdays, that's it.
Yeah. No. And on Mondays, it's gone Tuesday typically, so that maybe is an indication that Wednesday goes to Thursday, so um, okay. All right, we'll go from there. I mean, um, you know, hopefully we've done such a good job. There aren't a lot of questions, but never know. Anything else, Emily, Mike?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Uh, Tracy, Gary, thank you again for your help and your work here, um, and your, and your work that's coming this week. Um, really much appreciated. You can see the. Totally different change in the, in the public comments and um, and, and a really positive discussion. So thank you both, immense credit. Uh, with that, I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting. It's eight forty-one PM.
Second.
Perfect. Uh, any objections? All right. Thank you, everyone. Great meeting. Really appreciate it.